So I know we have public comment. We're going to start right away with public comment. Someone come up. Yep, right here.
Thank you. My name is Darren Massey, member of the community in Lunenburg. I'm here tonight representing the Lunenburg community group called ROAR, R-O-A-R, Resources for Superior Awareness and Recovery. Firstly, again, thank you for our first forum last year at school. Various associated bodies let us use the forum. We work together because I'm highly successful on this forum. This would be where we have tonight is to share our second event. We are proposing and are organizing a second event, March 8th. We will be having it once again in school building, this building. We would just like to put it around the comment for the community to know about the meeting. It will be here, it'll be from 6:30 PM, March 8th. It would be given by Dr. Jaffe. She's a PhD, she works out of Harvard, McLean. The title of the talk is Substance Use: How Families Can Help. So it's targeted for the general community, particularly families, families with children, families with caregivers, taking care of children of all ages around substance use. We, in addition, will follow up with the forward to request a layer of support that we can then take. That's what I have, and to answer any questions now or if you want.
Is she going to have a question and answer session at that?
Right, the way it's going to be formatted, refreshments from 6:15. The presentation will start at 6:30, or 90 minutes. At the end, it'll be about 8 o'clock, there'll be a Q and A, general questions. I'd just like to say thank you for bringing us to the community. Thanks for being part of that.
Okay.
And I'll give material.
Okay. I know that we've already received digitally the information from the group, so we are starting to spread that out through our various newsletters, putting it on the website, you know, through our lifelong learning program. We try to offer these kinds of things. So we sponsor this, we encourage this, and work with everyone. And when Dr. Massey said it was going to be here, he literally meant here, because they're in this room.
Oh, auditorium. The last one was at the auditorium, it was huge, it was packed, and it was very well-attended. The parking lot was full.
The thoughts were that a smaller, more intimate, but yet large enough to accommodate a good-sized group was what folks were looking for next, and so it will be in this room.
And I think some of us know Dr. Jaffe personally, as a parent in town. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. So now then, we're on to the chair's report. That's my report.
And so, yes, I have an announcement to make, actually, and I have mixed feelings about it. Because seven years ago, I started a partnership with Loxie, sitting as president of the PTO. And I've worked with her to do good things for the school community and the students. And sometimes we butted heads. But, yeah, sometimes we did. We butted heads, but overall, I thought we did a good job collaborating for our students. So I would like to announce that Loxie is retiring, and she will not be with us next school year, and that we will be getting our superintendent's search shortly. And we'll be reaching out to the community in a couple of weeks to hear what the community has to say, and have some feedback, and what they would like to see in the next superintendent. So, thank you. Thank you for the year of dedication to the students of this community. You have brought such wonderful things to this community and this school building. You had many roller coasters of years. As we talked about years, there were things.
Big challenges.
Yes, very big challenges that you've overcame successfully, and we thank you. Yeah.
Well, I thank all of you, because we overcame them. Because the thing about Lunenburg is it's always been about partnership, and any successes that I've experienced as superintendent have only been because of the marvelous kids that we work with, and just a great faculty and staff, and parents who support us, and a community that understands the importance of education and supports as well. So it's just been my privilege. I look forward to the next phase of my life with grandchildren, and a new one on the way, a little girl this time, and spending time with my husband, who's always, also retiring, and he's an educator as well. It's just a very exciting time for us. It's a very exciting time for the school community as well. I look forward to supporting the efforts in any way I can as we transition to the next phase, all of us. So, thank you very much, and thanks. I've had wonderful school committees to work with, and you're so dedicated and hardworking, and it's been a true pleasure and a joy. And I thank you for giving me that opportunity. It's been an honor. So, no tears.
I'm not going to, no, it was very hard, it was very hard. That's so hard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we have warrants to approve, and do we have line item transfers?
We don't have any line item transfers. We do have the warrants on the table, you can see them circulating around. If you have any questions, we'll certainly do that. I did, since we're on the topic of warrants, want to extend a big acknowledgement and thank you to Lynn Claff. Lynn, as you know, works up at Town Hall in the Town Accountant and Financial Director's Office. She does accounts payable up there. But she is helping us out down in the schools as we transition with Ms. Cooper's resignation, as she moves on to a new position. And we are just so appreciative of Lynn giving us the 14 hours that she has available during the week to keep our accounts payable, because our vendors do like to get paid. And Mr. Cassidy does have a few other things to be going on, so it's great to have Lynn there. I also want to acknowledge Penny Gorman, who works up in the guidance office, and she's helping out with some of our power school applications that Carrie also was responsible for. So we've had some great candidates, we're into kind of finalists and checking references, and I hope to, at the next meeting we have, maybe announce our new data services manager to all of you. But big shout-out again to Lynn and Penny for their assistance. So Lynn put together all of these warrants for us, so we'll keep doing that, and we'll be able to.
And I like the tape register at Haddon.
Did you like that?
I liked it. Just reminds me of my old accounting days.
I'll be sure to. And I forgot to mention, she also said that she would be training the new person.
Perfect, there you go. We will keep seeing that. Okay. So we have some regular session minutes to approve from January 17th that were sent around. Did you all take a look at them?
Yes.
No changes? No feedback, okay. So I'll take a motion to approve those minutes?
I make the motion that we approve the regular session minutes from January 17th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we had some executive session minutes to approve, and they were sent around. Did you see those?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that one?
I will make the motion that we accept the executive session minutes from 9:20, 2017, 10:04, 2017, 11:01, 2017, and 12:20, 2017.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're on to the superintendent's report.
Yes. I want to begin first asking everybody to join in another moment of silence as this evening we hear of another tragedy in terms of school shooting in Florida. So could we all just take a minute to think about the victims, their families, the entire community? Thank you. I just want to remind our school community that our teachers continue to receive training and updates around both active shooter drills as well as other emergency drills. Just last year, we took the step of saying that students would be included in those drills, and I know the school councils have been working with the administrators to do that in a responsible fashion. We wanted to present it to students in a manner that they know it is a serious manner. We don't want to have children heighten their anxiety. We want to give them tools to be able to respond in emergencies with their teachers in an appropriate fashion, and in a fashion that will save their lives. So those will continue to be developed, and before the end of the year, you will see all the schools having those drills involving the students. Sometimes like to get to a little warmer weather before we start putting the students out in the cold to do the drills, but it's just a reminder of how important those are. But also, I think, in listening to the news reels around this before I came here, the importance of if you see something, say something, and for all of our mental health personnel and community mental health personnel to be working actively when we see individuals that are struggling, that are at risk to themselves or others, that we're making sure that those procedures and those protocols are put in place so we can ensure that the individual safety as well as the safety of the community. And that takes everybody working together every single day to know each other, to know our neighbors, to extend a helping hand, to call if you feel somebody needs assistance if you have a concern. Because it's the community being watchful and helpful and supportive that makes a difference that's been documented time and again as we've done reviews of what were the early warning signs, how could have this been interrupted earlier? So I intend, over the course of the next couple of weeks, to do some more work of revisiting those kinds of things with the entire public in terms of how we can keep our community safe and our children safe. I wanted to let you know that next week, our extended day program, there were sufficient sign-ups at the primary for that program to operate. There were a few sign-ups at the elementary school as well, and so what we're going to do is combine those programs. So all the parents that requested to use the services during the February extended day will be accommodated, but we will just have them all at the primary school. It made a lot more sense in terms of personnel, and probably for families too, in terms of not having two different places to drop off. So Mrs. Perry has put that in place, and we'll be there to serve those students. I wanted to let you know that we are working on a very exciting opportunity that former school committee member brought to us, Dr. Greg Berhume, who, as you know, works at MIT. And there is a program for high school students that provides some opportunities for online learning, and then some summer opportunities as well. And I'm going to gather that information, I'll get it out to you. I'm just, I'm so appreciative to Dr. Berhume for bringing it forward. Mr. Cohen is working as a point person with us to kind of coordinate that, and we'll let everyone know some more information about that as we go forward. I also got, received an email from our school nurse coordinator, Mrs. Finch, just talking about these wonderful statistics. You know that as we listen to the news, that the flu is rampant around the United States. And I sent recently our statistics around our school attendance, and our lowest, the school that was lowest was still at 92% in terms of the overall month. And I think that speaks volumes to the efforts of our school nurses, as well as, I know our custodians have just been really, really busy making sure that tables get wiped down, that doorknobs are cleaned on a regular basis, just doing all of that regular, well, it's actually extra cleaning on a very frequent basis, like daily, to try to minimize the spread of those germs. But in January 2017, across the nurses' offices, there were 1,555 total visits, and 92.5% of those students returned class. And you know, for school nursing, the goal is to make sure that children are healthy, ready to be available for learning, and to get them back into the classroom if it's appropriate for them to be there. So that's an amazing rate. In January of 2018, so this January, there was 1,503. So visits are down just a few numbers, 42, about 52 to be exact, and the return to class rate has risen to 94.3%. So just some very impressive statistics about getting kids back into classrooms and learning from our nurses that I wanted to make sure that you were aware of. I also wanted to give you a heads-up, and, Alexa, I hope you're not, I'm not taking this one away from you, because I know you've got a lot to report on, there's so much going on at the high school right now. But our music department will again be performing at Symphony Hall. Our students vocalists will be there on March 23rd and 25th. That's the handle in Hyden Society. They have the opportunity, in fact, their museologist was out just recently to talk about the history of the music that they're going to be performing. So they'll have numerous practices with fuller groups from other schools, and they'll have that opportunity to perform in Symphony Hall. I know, I've gone in, every time they perform, it's just a marvelous opportunity for the students. And if you haven't been able to take advantage of that, I strongly encourage you to experience that as the students experience it, because there's nothing like being on Symphony Hall and performing when you're a musician. So congratulations, and a big thank you to Mrs. Fordwell, who continues to encourage and support these kinds of opportunities for the students at Lunenburg High School. We really appreciate that. And Ms. Fordwell also shared with me, and we'll have this at the next meeting, that I believe there's about 21 students that have signed up for the music trip this year, it's to Nashville. She's putting together the final itinerary and what it's going to look like, what they're going to be doing while they're in Nashville, and I'll be bringing that forward for final approval. We gave tentative approval about a year ago for them to start the process of advertising, and students should be able to start saving money. So we'll have the final cost, the number attending, and you'll have an opportunity to see their final itinerary as well. So we'll bring that forward when we have that, they're putting the final touches on it now, so.
For that Symphony Hall, would you have to get tickets anywhere?
You know, sometimes they provide some tickets to the school. There are some available for purchase, so I'll check with Mrs. Fordwell and see if we might have some that are made available. I know seating ticket holders at times donate those, so the parents, as well as others, are able to attend, just to encourage that participation. So I'll check and get more information back to you.
Thank you. You bet. So that's it?
Daddy is.
Okay.
Hi. So there's so much going on at the high school right now, between sports and plays, everything's pretty crazy, especially approaching February break. Tomorrow, the competitive class plays will take place at 6:30 in the auditorium, and then this Friday, we'll have the encore performance also at 6:30. The Lunenburg, the National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive during the school day on Tuesday, March 6th, and that'll run from 8 to 1 PM. It's just a good opportunity for students in the building and teachers to donate blood, and also a good opportunity for the members of NHS to volunteer. All winter sports teams have made playoffs, which is very exciting. And additionally, the boys' basketball team has been invited to a tournament in Clark, which is a very important competition, and that'll take place at 2:45. Their first game is against Narragansett this Sunday. And then also tomorrow is the indoor track meets, it's their state meet tomorrow in Boston, which will take place throughout the day, so that's very exciting. And then student council is really very, very busy right now. With Valentine's Day, we handed out hot chocolate to the students, which they always love, and we got so much help from the cafeteria faculty, so I wanted to thank them for all their efforts. Also, we're excited to announce that we are kicking off a Make-A-Wish project, which will take, will officially start the following Tuesday after returning from break. Basically, all it is, is the student council will raise money during lunches mainly, just collect donations from the students and the faculty that will all go to a Make, go to a wish. We don't know the person who our money will be going to until after all the money is sent, and then we'll receive a package of who they are, what they did with their wish. So it should be a really uplifting, we're going to host a, or we're going to have a, what's the word, I'm looking for, a presentation of this in the auditorium during our long block advisory on Tuesday, just to let the students know where the money's going, and just basically kick-start the project. Also, it's exciting that a lot of what we've been doing in student council has started to actually come to reality, such as the key cards. We really fought to let, to allow the seniors with the senior privileges to get key cards, and they were passed out. Also, we are getting microwaves in the cafeteria, which is exciting for those who bring in their lunch from home. And then also, I believe that the graduation caps for students to be able to customize this year is going to be happening. And then lastly, I talked to the student council about the banners that we talked about, I believe it was two meetings ago. I got a very enthusiastic reaction. All the class presidents and class advisors seem interested in having a small portion of their class gift be adding a flag to the outside of the building. There was some concern, especially with the senior class, of possible money issues, but I think if the classes have the amount needed in their end-of-year budget, then I think everybody is up to donate a flag.
And I know Mr. Tobin and Ms. Cavioli continue to work with vendors, trying to flush out just the design, well, not so much the design, but the length of the banners. There's some discussion going on around that, because that will influence durability as well as making sure that the hardware is substantial in order to provide for the longest life possible with those. So I had touched bases with Ms. Cavioli this week, and she said they're still collecting information and hoping to get some things finalized and a proposal to come forward so they can present to you, and we can see if we can move forward in making this a reality.
Okay. Excellent. Sounds like a lot is going on.
There is a lot going on.
So will they put up a schedule for playoffs?
Oh, I'm sure though. I'm sure, there are a few meetings that need to take place between the coaches of each team before actual playoff schedules are out.
Okay, and fan buses?
I, hopefully, we can talk to the athletic department and make that happen.
Yes, I remember last year there were fan buses.
Right. I believe there was only a fan bus to the district final game, but maybe if we make, I think the Lloyd hockey team has potential to make it very far this year, so.
Yeah. Great, thanks. Okay. So now, on to the new business, from school choice opening.
Yes, I met with Mr. Spanafino, and the reason it was Mr. Spanafino and I meeting is because we traditionally have not opened school choice below the high school level. I also talked with Mr. Santri at that time, just to get a better feel for where our numbers were, as well as checking in our power school. And so after reviewing the numbers, currently, our eighth grade class has 148 students in it, and there are six sections being taught there. Our current ninth grade class is 126. That was about what we were shooting for in terms of class size. The 148 is a larger class for us. It is next to the largest class that we have right now across all grades, kindergarten through grade 12. And our typical rate of retention with eighth to ninth grade is about 85% of the students who remain at Lunenburg High School after completing eighth grade here. You know, some students select to do a regional vocational tech, Monti Tech school. Several students go off to those programs to pursue their interests and their passions. And then some students look at other kinds of opportunities, and particular private spaces is usually the profile. So when we have 148 students and run our solid figures that says, you know, 15% will remain with us, that puts us right on target for the number of incoming freshmen that we usually try to bring in, class size, which is around that 125, 126 number. So Mr. Spanafino and I are not recommending any additional openings for school choice in grade nine for next year. We do recommend that we continue with our opportunity for students to attend school choice if they start in Lunenburg as a high school, if they're enrolled as a high school or in ninth grade, for anybody that's a 10th, 11th, or 12th grader. If any student currently attending Lunenburg High School in grades 10, 11, or 12, if their family should need to relocate for any reason, if the students are able to get to school in the morning on time, then we offer them a choice slot to do that. That allows students to complete their high school career with the high school where they started. So that is our one recommendation, and the only recommendation for opening school choice. As we look at our numbers, and you know, we're trying to add some teachers next year, just to lower class size, you know, maybe we look at grade two, our average size there is 24, 25. You know, we have 23, 24 as class sizes in grade three. We do have a couple grades that are in the 20 to 22 range, but those, for lower grades, are high numbers as well. So the middle school, all 25 to 26 already in terms of our average class sizes there. So we really, we're so honored to have so many families that reach out and say, is choice available in Lunenburg, because, you know, we'd like for our children to have that opportunity. But our class sizes don't really allow us to fill in with choice, because we're already struggling with maintaining lower class sizes or obtaining lower class sizes. So our recommendation this year is for grades 10, 11, and 12, anyone currently attending, if they move, would be able to remain under choice.
Okay. Okay.
My only question was about the 15% to Monti Tech or other schools. Is that something that has been consistent over the last couple of years, like about 15%, or is that, does that go back and forth, you know, as I look at the numbers?
You know, we filled in in other years, because when the 15% go out, that's when we open some slots to keep our numbers, because we want to keep a certain critical mass, if you will, at our high school to keep the diversity and the construction. So to answer your question, that 15% has been solid across many, many, many years.
Okay. So there's no poss, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking out loud. If it's, if it's more than that... If it's more than that, are we going to then want to revisit this and look at getting to the 124? Or are we just gonna say, you know what, it is what it is, and we're gonna take however many, do you know what I mean?
I think if we were to see that our enrollment, for whatever reason, as we get into August, that would certainly be something that we might come back and say, "Would you consider it at that time?" It's kind of late to be opening slots.
Right.
But, you know, if it's just one or two students, we probably won't, because we might still be getting muggins as well.
Right.
You know, if for some reason this is a real outlier year, and it's drastically more than that, we could consider it. I don't know that we should anticipate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But it's a fair question, definitely.
And does that affect the budget?
Not bringing in choice students. Usually, we bring in around 10, so it does have a budgetary impact on a couple ends, because you're not replacing, you're possibly not replacing the seniors that are exiting. And then you're not refreshing those with new entries.
That's a budget.
Yep. That's why it's important to view choice as one-time money that you have available to spend on special projects. And we try to avoid having reoccurring expenses come out of the school choice revenues that we have, that revolving fund.
Okay, so maybe you can take a motion on that?
Yes, the school committee needs to vote to both participate in school choice again this year, as well as to declare the openings, any open slots.
Okay. So I need a motion in regards to the ninth grade first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to not open any school choice spots for the ninth grade for the 2018, 2019 school year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
But two open for grades?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Two motions. All right, we just did the first one. Now we're on the second one. I'll take the second motion to open for 10 through 12 students that are currently enrolled in those grades.
Currently enrolled in those grades? What about the ninth grade that are not?
If you're in 10th grade, it's 10th grade.
Next year.
Next year.
Yes, okay.
So they're already enrolled this year, 10th grade, and next year could...
Got it.
And we're gonna let you take that.
Yes.
You worded it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve allowing school choice for students currently enrolled in grades nine through 11, so next year they will become grades 10 through 12 and could stay in Lunenburg Public Schools.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Very well stated.
Okay, and now for the donations. Do we have donations?
We have some donations. I wanted to make you aware of some wonderful donations that have enabled Miss Champagne to purchase, and it's already there, it's in place, through some designation of some of the fundraising that they did at Turkey Hill Elementary, and through a couple other donations, they were able to put $5,000 towards the purchase of another chrome cart. And one of the donations that they received is a $200 donation. I apologize, because I was looking, I know we sent this out. It was a donation by a family, and there's a matching grant to it.
Oh, no, I saw that.
Oh, yes.
Right, right. And I think we processed that letter.
Yeah.
And I apologize, because I thought I had it right here, but I'm not seeing that to acknowledge the family, so if you...
Can you go over it?
Yeah. Just pause here.
The family was Russo family.
Did you find Russo?
Yeah, the Russo family.
Thank you.
And what was the name of their company that company matched it?
The name of the company matching it is Eaton Vance Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin.
Thank you.
Right there.
Teamwork.
Technology.
Oh, you hold it up on your...
Why didn't we have it?
So they already purchased the cart?
It is. It's been delivered, it's been purchased.
And time for the MCATs.
And time for the MCATs.
Which is what their goal...
And a little warm-up to the MCATs.
Exactly.
You know, the school council and Mrs. Shenko and Gankel worked really hard to do that. I was appreciative, because we had that dilemma. And I said, "Do you think the school council might help out to help, you know, move towards purchasing this?" And then they got some donations as well, and then the district filled in the rest of it. It's great.
They were worried over there for MCATs.
Yeah, I know they were.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That is good news.
It's very good.
Yes.
There's a will, there's a way.
Always. Just have to work. Okay, so we're doing the first reading of the policy number, 1203, naming of facilities.
Right, this is being recommended to you by the school policy subcommittee. Ms. Bertrand, as well as Ms. Sroka and I have been working on this with input from a variety of folks that we've worked with, including our guidance counselors, just working to get the policy to be responsive and also as clear as possible, so everyone, when entering into this notion of naming any kind of facility or space within the school, understands how that flows and is prepared to follow that. So we did point out to you some of the changes. Those are highlighted in that handout to you. Do you have that just?
Right here, right.
Yep, that's it.
Do you have that, right, red line?
It's red line.
The first one is on the front of the page, and the second's policy is on the back. Okay? Red and policy on the back.
There is that new additional policy that was added there.
Oh, okay. That one's branded, okay.
And what we're talking about there, if I could just read it, is the loss of any student or former student or any member of the Lunenburg School Department is shared by the entire school community, along with the grieving family. As places designed primarily to support learning, school sites and facilities should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials. Permanent memorials shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. So that was added. We did a lot of research across the Mass School Committee policies across the state, as well as looking at policies that are published or recommendations of policies that are published in order to handle this very sensitive topic. This does not prevent temporary memorials from perhaps being part of the process of grieving when someone within the school committee is lost, but it does provide for the fact that that would just be temporary. It's not. And those take many forms as well. I know we shared with the school committee those documents, and if anybody else was interested in seeing some of the research that we looked into there and the recommendations, that would be helpful. We did some additional things with regard to a policy we already had in place, just to try to bring some more clarity to it in terms of a facility or space may be named after a person, the time limit of the five years posthumously before it would be considered, we felt was an important aspect to add in there. And then also, any kind of signage that would be associated with that space or with that facility would need to be approved by the school committee by a majority, a unanimous vote, not a majority vote, I'm sorry, by a unanimous vote on these. So those were the changes we made to the existing policy around naming facilities and spaces, and then adding the second policy with regard to memorials.
Can I ask for clarification on why unanimous, not majority?
No, we're just doing the reading, first reading. We have three readings. We're not gonna act, we are to waive the actual reading, correct? We don't need to read this out loud?
Right. No, I was asking specifically why that particular part of the policy reads unanimous vote of the school committee instead of a majority regarding the class.
It was parallel construction and consistent with how you get there to begin with. It takes a unanimous vote of the school committee to...
To name the building.
To name the building.
No, down here.
Yeah, I know, but it's because they're trying to... You have to be unanimous, so you did, we did it exactly, it's the same.
Good.
Okay?
Well, I...
I thought you meant right now.
No, I missed that, I missed that part.
Oh, okay. Well, that didn't change. That's not red.
I did review it.
Missed that, tied together.
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna waive the actual reading, and then we'll present it again at the next meeting.
And we will put this up on our website. I'll include it in an upcoming superintendence update and put it out to the public, so we can begin to get feedback on it as well, so...
And we have other ones that we're working on, other policies that we'll be bringing in.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, now, Ms. Blaisdell. Mrs. Blaisdell is here to talk about our preschools. Valentine's Day, everybody. I was a little late. My husband always makes plans to go out.
This is the place to be.
Yeah. So, you know, I presented to you some reading about the preschool program, and, you know, for you to consider several possibilities around the preschool tuition increase. The school's committee does set the tuition rate for the typical preschoolers that come into our preschool program. Typically, a preschool program is designed specifically to meet the needs of our students with special needs. But then we really value the fact that our children need to have typical role models and to learn better alongside their peers. So it's always been a tradition in Lunenburg for us to have a preschool program that is mixed with students with special needs, as well as active developing preschoolers. So the school committee has always set the tuition. The last three years, you have done a 2.7% increase, except for the last year. The last year, I should have been here the year before to present for you to increase, so it stays the same.
Right, I see that.
Last year. And when I looked at it again this year and said, "Oops, you know, I need to get here and have you look at the rates and make a decision," I presented you with some information about the current preschool, about the rates and what that has looked like regarding the total cost for a two-day program, three-day program, and five-day program, which is what we had offered for some of our four-year-olds this past year. And then I gave you a sheet that talks about what it would look like when we forward with a 2.7% increase, 3% increase, 3.5 or 4% increase. I want to remind you that all of these funding that comes in through the program goes directly to the town. I know that we make sure that they know how much is brought in when we're setting budgets, but it does go directly to the town, so that when you're making that decision, you're thinking about that. And, you know, we are looking to possibly put on an additional part-time preschool teacher next year. That was something that was presented in the budget this coming year. There was a lot of reasons for us to make that recommendation. One of the major reasons is we have a lot of three-year-olds that are coming into our program as students with special needs, which means that we don't have a lot of places for them to be with the right amount of typical preschoolers and three-year-olds. So I wanted you to be able to have that information as far as what our program would look like next year. I can't in good conscience recommend that you have a three-year-old preschool program with 14 preschoolers in it, but that is what you might be looking at, because we would have just that many students with special needs. So you have, the main decision before you is what is the rate that you'd like to set that preschool at? And who pays for this?
Who pays?
What students pay the rate? The typical preschoolers that come into our program.
Right, right.
We can't charge any students with special needs. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have? If I can answer them, if I can't, I know that Ms. Collins might be able to help us as well.
I did reach out to the town manager, because this flows into the town on the revenue side, and so if there was going to be a decrease in that revenue, I felt that it was important for us to get that information to her. So the impact of not adding the additional halftime program would basically result, decrease the revenue generated, would only be about $33,000, based upon the typical distribution around that. Currently, in FY '18, the students we've collected about $47,000, almost $48,000, so it would be reduced down to the three. Now, with the additional teacher, the revenue that could be generated, even with a minor 2.7 increase, would be $57,000.
But how much would the teacher cost?
The teacher would cost at least that, an entry-level teacher is right at $47,000, and that doesn't include any benefits. So that's kind of, you know, there's, you have programmatic concerns going on here, then you have the revenue stream pieces going on as well. Several years ago, the district, when Mrs. Bonzie was the principal at the primary school, there was strong demand for increasing more opportunities for disabled preschoolers.
For typical role models.
That's right. But once again, we faced our ongoing challenges about adding a teacher. So what ended up happening is the extended day program kind of morphed into an early learning program, or added an early learning program component to it. The interesting thing about that morph, as I looked at it, is it didn't necessarily, it was mixed in, the revenues were all mixed in with the extended day program. We really didn't differentiate between the revenues coming in for the early learning and keep that program separate and do the financial analysis of it. It was just all part of extended day.
Of revolving self-activity.
Now, that program, unlike the preschool programs, does not have certified licensed preschool early childhood educators in it, DESE educators. So the cost of that program for students to attend was substantially less than typically developing students as well. Now, the early learning program has already started, you know, getting inquiries, even sign-ups, because the registration just stays up there, and so parents have started registering for that. I think the really challenging thing for us is getting a clear pathway for, are we going to be able to add this teacher as we work through this budget process? What are the impacts of adding that teacher on... What are the impacts of adding that teacher on the early learning program? So those parents can have an opportunity to find other, other kinds of care and preschool experiences. This is not an easy thing for parents, you know, when you're talking about preschools and care. So you want to give them as much leeway as possible if, if we're going to need to take a room and, for the additional preschool program.
So, we don't have any other rooms to put them in at the primary school?
We have a music room, we have a tech room that could be changed into a classroom, but that's, that's what we have.
So we moved them back to the primary school, the early learning center and the extended day, and your plan was to have a preschool program? Your pre, a new preschool teacher go into that room with them when you pulled them in? Were they aware of that when you moved them back?
They, we talked about the possibilities that that could happen in the future.
I was not aware of that. Were you guys aware of that?
I mean, we've recommended preschool teachers the last three years.
Yes, I understand that.
I think, I think after the, we had the audit of the program.
Right, we have, I have that right here, right here, I brought it, listen, the audit.
Right, there was not a recommendation.
There was no recommendation for a preschool teacher?
Without the data, she couldn't make a recommendation.
Right, yeah. So I'm just, we were not aware that you would be, when we moved them back to the primary school, the extended day program and the early learning center, that you might need that classroom for a preschool program?
And our numbers change every year. And this year is really unprecedented to hear that many three-year-olds coming up. It's, it's always very up in the air as to how many students will be identified with special needs and entering into your preschool program. So if we don't get a preschool, turn out, you know, you're the school committee, you're gonna make that decision as to what you think is best for the district. If we don't get a preschool teacher, I will not be recommending taking any, any typical three-year-olds, because we just have too many children. I think the other thing that changed on the primary school is we added a first-grade position.
Yeah.
So that was one of the other things that, that changed in the environment, because a year ago, without adding that first-grade position, you know, there wasn't an additional room there that could be utilized. The fact is, is that the primary school was built to accommodate three preschool classrooms and six sections of every grade of K1 and 2. But what was left out of that equation when it was built was a self, a substantially separate classroom.
Or any extended day program.
Or any extended day program, right, because it, because you didn't have the early learning program at that point in time. The early learning program was a, a good idea to help fill a gap when there was space to be, you know, to be had. You know, moving out of Turkey, our TCP was more about getting the extended day program down there. I mean, if that program could operate, you know, we could ask about renting. It wouldn't be a long-term solution, it would be another stopgap solution, but you could, renting room for the early learning program, not the extended day. I wouldn't recommend leaving extended day back there. But that's another option that could be explored, and then that program would need to generate the rent that's necessary to have us use it by the town, so.
So it is an option.
I, a question. If there were an additional teacher, how many sort of typically developing three-year-olds do you think you would be able to open up slots for, based on the expected students coming in?
I think what we, what we calculated would, it would be the difference between, this is three and four-year-olds, 16 and 28, that we could bring up, up to 28 students in three and four-year-olds.
Okay.
So how many would be in a three-year-old classroom that you're talking about? Off the top of my head, I can't give you that number, because it depends on the numbers of our special needs kids.
Isn't that the last, the last paragraph on that first page? That with the additional preschool teacher would be able to accommodate 10 to 12, 3, and 18 to 14.
So 10 to 12, three years.
10 to 12.
Is, are. Within, within, obviously, within all?
Within all three of those.
Right.
Two and a half, I just wanna, I, I.
It's a half time.
It's a half time. Wait, that's still in the budget. Yeah. We had, during our lottery last week, we had 23 three-year-olds and 25 four-year-olds that came in to sign up for the lottery. That gives you an idea of what the community is looking for, 23 and 24.
And we still have in the budget to potentially add a second-grade teacher?
Well, it was proposed, yes.
Yes, it was proposed.
And beef on the lottery? So it would be approximately, and you give preference to four-year-olds, correct?
Well, we.
Depends if you have an exclusively three-year-old room or not?
We typically keep an exclusive three and an exclusive four. It just makes the most sense. You know, we're, the, we've had a couple where we've had to mix, again, trying to keep ourselves within the guidelines of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Then they've made decisions about, you know, students being in those mixed groups. But most of them are, we try to keep them three and four, they're at very different developmental levels.
So it looks to be you would be able to take approximately 50%?
Yeah.
Of the students that came in, if there wasn't the additional, okay.
And I'm just trying to wrap my head around the fact that this discussion is about part-time preschool teacher, but it really also is about space for that.
Oh, yes.
And, and in the past, and I know the history as far as my kids go back for extended day, but has extended day in the past been, as it is in other schools, not in a room, but in the open spaces that we have in a school? So cafeteria, the gym.
Even right now, with that room, they're in our cafeteria, they're in our gymnasium, they're up in our technology room, they're, they're all in the building.
So it's, that part isn't manageable.
Prior to the third grade being placed at the primary school?
So the extended day had a room.
Had a room, yeah.
Had a room.
Yep.
It had, what room did it have?
The same room, the same room, yeah.
And why was that room available? We had. It must have become available after six classrooms, because.
When we went, I think when we went down to five in the kindergarten, it must have become available.
So, you know, it's really contingent upon the overall student population, too, because of the construction of the building of five classroom, five classroom sections or six classrooms.
And subsequently, what I'm hearing you say is, next year, there might be two three-year-olds who are special needs, who need to come into the program, in two years. You know, this happens to be this year with a lot of students who.
Right.
There's just no way to tell.
It does, you know, the last three years, the reason why we've recommended a preschool program is, you know, that ability to be able to, you know, break up the special needs groups a little bit further and, you know, have the typical students with role models. You know, when, when you have the two classes, you know, and one being a very much more intensive special education classroom, then you have decreased opportunities for your typicals to come in. So if you look at our overall over the last several years, we've only brought in a few of our 20 to 24 students that have come to us for, you know, preschool opportunities for their children, because we're just, we've got too many, not enough spaces to put them and, you know, too many students with special needs.
Now, we'll be, some of, do some of these people send their kids to the extended day program after preschool?
Yes, some of them.
Correct, they do for the rest of the day?
Yes, or before.
Or before.
Or before.
They use our extended day program, and that's part of why they.
You mean the early learning center?
No, they're extended, they'll send them down.
Like you're in, if you're in preschool for your two and a half hours, you're going before or after.
Right, but if you go after the two and a half hours, technically, you're entering into the.
Their afternoon.
Their afternoon extended day, but it's.
Early learning center.
Their afternoon, yeah.
Right.
But I suspect, and I don't know that there's a way to quantify this with any data, but I suspect that the students that we have earlier, and we can get, and we have three-year-olds who have the right typical role models, and then mainstream into the kindergarten and first and second grade, the experience is much more manageable for everyone, because we've had them for such a long time and they had the right typical role models. Because without the role models, let's get them ready and get them.
Yeah, all along, it's been about creating opportunities and continuing to do that. We're at that point, I mean, since the building opened, there was a true preschool. And as Ms. Blaisdell says, for the last, I think, five years, they've been seeing this increased need and, about adding another preschool. And this year, we quantified it by saying, well, we'll add a half a preschool, which makes sense if you have, you know, 10 or five kindergarten classrooms, you know, that you're going to be serving preschool students, about two and a half classrooms, it equals that amount over time, right? 110, 110 students being served in kindergarten and about, you start out around 45, it usually grows to about 55 that you're going to be serving in a preschool program.
Question, you had talked about sort of base pay around $47,000, that would be for a full-time position?
Oh, you know what, that is a full-time position.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Good point.
We'll be getting benefits now or no?
They do get benefits, so with benefits.
Yeah, it's probably on the whole, okay.
Yeah. The tuition charge for this program is really, it's, I did the calculation, I didn't send that out, because when you look at the, the total costs of salaries, and this was, health benefits not included, it's, it's $332,000 for the salaries of the teachers and the paraprofessionals.
How much, 300?
332,000. So, you know, the, the tuition.
Does it include benefits or just?
That does not include the benefits. So the tuition covers only about 10 to 17% of the total cost, depending on where, where you set the salary, the tuition rate set. So it's not that this program is funding. I think what we need to be sensitive to is any drop in revenue for the town, we, we need to give them fair warning around that, so adjustments can be made. And I don't know what, how that line will go in terms of that translate out to a reduction with regard to the school budget, since it is around preschool kinds of tuitions. Those adjustments have been made in the past, because there was a time that our tuitions were higher than what they are even now, because we were able to bring in more to the, to the working students. I think we have some options. There's still some viable options out there to address the. So what I would, what I hope we can avoid is, you know, having parents in the last-minute crunch to try to figure out what the needs of their students are. The lottery's been held, people will be informed of what position they are, right? For the week after we come back, we draw the names from that lottery. We like to have the numbers of how many we're gonna be able to have in our program, but we won't be able to have that at that point, obviously. So what three-year-old parents will know is where they are in, in the pick. They won't know how many students will be able to accept in the program, if we are going to or not, okay? That's what they won't know. So that's, you know, that's gonna be hard for some of them. Some of them are going to say, I can't wait, and they're gonna move on.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, we'll have the numbers of four-year-olds that we can bring into the program, but, and we'll, we'll let them know. So, that's kind of where we are. We're, you know, we're at, they'll get a letter saying where they are on the list. And some families might be.
What are some realistic options? Because for me, sharing a classroom, that, that part is really concerning for me, for those that are paying tuition, for those that are paying tuition to early learning center. So what are some viable options we could?
Are we talking about? Yes, that's what they're talking about.
The sharing of the classroom?
That's one of the options we're talking about.
Okay, I thought we were talking about.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, or.
No, no, okay, okay. It was one of the options that we talked about.
So what would be our other viable option? Just because that, that to me is, is an option that.
Yeah, the only, the other option is to look at TCP for the early learning program and utilize space there and not have that early learning program down at the primary school. You could run it perhaps in the afternoon to provide that extended day for, for students that in the morning would go.
The consistency piece, you mean? Just so that they're, so that if you have students coming from our preschool, then walk down the hall.
Instead of, instead of having to be transported up to TCP.
Right.
So I, I see that as viable, you know, there certainly is right now space over TCP. How long that will continue will, you know, is a question mark. And could that become in the mix in terms of thinking about that program being there for, you know, just a general community service and for this, the employees that, that work in that facility as well? Because we open this up to employees. So I think that, you know, they seem like, more like opportunities as we continue to try to provide as much of that educational opportunity for the students, for younger students. None of it's mandated except for the three- to five-year-old students with disabilities. That's the only thing that's required.
So basically, but first we have to set the.
Right.
That's about it. That's what you're, our goal, because the other stuff we cannot do right now.
We didn't really, we, we.
No, but you might want to talk about.
Yeah, I know you were gonna vote, I think it was a honest discussion rather than having to decide, because.
But the fees you would like us to decide on.
Sue.
Oh, okay.
You have parents asking.
Okay.
This year's rate is, and that you're considering the rate increase.
And I knew that.
I revert to that, my line of thinking is we didn't raise it last year, that we go to the three and a half.
That's your line?
This year, and then, we're talking pennies.
Yeah.
A day, literally pennies a day.
Oh, no, it's not significant, no.
The other thing is, is the comparison to other districts.
And the other districts, we are, yeah, looking at those numbers, we're certainly well within that. But I think, offering a three and a half versus the 2.7, people are used to the 2.7, say, three and a half, might be a little more palatable than four, even though it's just, literally. Ten cents, oh, a difference.
Like seriously?
I think some people might just see the four. But it's too much.
I know, but comparative to other towns.
But here, that's the other point.
You don't want to just jump it up to four? Even at the five-day monthly rate, it still only goes up $5. Yeah, that's the line.
Well, like I said.
I see what you're saying.
But if, if people are used to 2.7, and then all of a sudden, we're, they're seeing four percent.
I don't think they know a percentage, I think they would see it goes up if it's on a cent or a dollar first.
You may be right, I.
I don't know, I.
I haven't been in a position to look at this, because I haven't had.
Yeah, when we, when we talk about it, I don't say to them, it's gonna be a 2.7% rate. They, they, they come in and we tell them what the rate's going to be.
But yeah, I would say go with that depends on.
I see, I think I caught one small typo on the two-day monthly rate from the three percent to the three and a half percent in the year 2019. It's the exact same number.
Yes, oh, it probably is. How many eyes do we have on this?
And, yeah. Okay, and also the total cost.
So, what the parents will probably really be looking at, they'll be looking at the monthly check they write.
Right, right.
So, well, it's five monthly, what is it? It's quarterly.
It's quarterly.
They pay quarterly, so that's the number that they would be looking at. Some page, all of it at one time.
Some do.
Right? Some don't.
The reason for the quarterly payments?
I think it's actually three payments a year.
It's a three.
Okay.
But it's like, so they have a couple of months if they don't.
Yeah.
Is this something they can pay on RevTrak?
Yes.
Right, to me. Yeah, especially if you can do a lot and only have that service fee.
It's only three dollars, it's not three percent, it's three dollars. People think it's three percent, but it's three-dollar transactions. I do all of my lunches and then I'll eat at one the next month.
So, did you think about a jump the first year and then perhaps a lesser increase the next two years? Or were you looking at perhaps across the board?
What would it?
We're talking twenty cents, ten and twenty cents a day.
Yeah, it's not, even that, it's just.
Well, it's nineteen seventy-five.
Well, it's nineteen seventy-five now, but it hasn't been an increase for two years.
Twenty-five, fifty cents times our main date.
Well, on the two days, seventy-three.
Well, I'm looking, oh, look at the end, yeah, well, look at the end result. Months of thirty-five ninety-four.
Yeah, it's like twenty bucks.
Yes.
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah, I think.
Right?
I don't think anybody, I agree that no one, I would never ask a percentage.
Four percent.
I would say, what is it? Oh, it's a difference of.
Unless they pull up the YouTube video.
Everyone. And right now, the demand is high.
Yes, I know.
I don't think we're scaring anybody off with the current payment. I would think if we saw that.
With a nominal difference like this, I don't think it would deter votes.
And we're not, we're not doing it to, you know, break in the month. It's a reasonable request to increase.
And it doesn't cover the cost.
No, it's still not breaking the cost.
I, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will take a motion.
I make a motion that we increase the daily rate for the preschool by four percent from nineteen seventy-five to.
Twenty-fifty-four.
Twenty-fifty-four.
Okay, but can we do this? Can we make a motion? Are we doing it for the rest of three years like it is on this chart? Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one?
Are we doing the increase for four percent for the next three years?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what superintendent wanted to know. Are we doing the increase for the next three years of that block? That way they don't have to come back and ask us. But their next, correct. So, I would like to take that motion instead.
Why do all my motions get messaged out? I make a motion that we increase the daily rate at the preschool by four percent over the next three years.
Twenty-nineteen?
Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the other stuff, though, I think we have.
No space.
Well, I would, I would encourage you with the early learning center, since it was set with a kind of a ratio aligned to what this tuition was set, that the early learning center's rate be increased.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly the same, okay? That, by those percentages, which is factored that.
Four percent over the next, for fiscal nineteen twenty and twenty next.
So, what would that, I want to.
Well, it's fifteen dollars right now.
Okay, so what if, I don't even know what that is. Fifteen dollars per session?
So, we'll get that up.
Four-fifty-eight. Are we, is it fifteen or seventeen? Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Are we increasing?
Extended day too? Was that on the table?
Extended day, I think you can talk about differently.
Okay, all right.
Because this is an early learning, it was set out to be, to mirror the preschool programs, but once again, not have necessarily DESE-certified license teacher. It's compliant with the early learning, with the early childhood and care requirements. And there's a lot of professional development, a lot of coordination that's provided there. But the teachers in that classroom are not.
Right, they fall under a different. They fall under more of a daycare, the D.
Early education.
E C C. Yeah. More, that's similar to Bonjour and Saint Bonjour.
So, I think it just makes sense to whatever you do with the preschool, which you've just voted to do the four-four-four, we do the early learning center.
Okay, so we need a motion. Four percent, we, uh, fifteen, fifteen dollars would go up seven percent.
So, we're taking a separate motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the eight-four percent increase for physical year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one for the early learning center.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, extended day is totally separate.
Yeah, extended day has always been an hourly rate for care. It has been for over a decade now.
Two thousand and five.
Okay.
So, I, so, so when that rate was set, I had a student begin. It was still, it was really. When the building opened.
Four dollars opened.
It was four-fifty-nine.
Yeah, it's been four-fifty-nine.
And, you know, it's a service we provide to families, and the reason that we've not come to you asking for an increase is because the program was generated in sufficient funds to operate and operate well. Some of the changes that are happening is we're lowering our student to adult, our junior age rate shows to make sure that there's, we've increased the numbers there, but we also needed to increase our staff, and we want to make sure that staff, that we're meeting the needs of all the students that are participating in that program. And so, sometimes the staff ratio, staff to student ratio needs to be even lower. And so, we're at the point with this fund balance now that it's definitely operating in the black. But it is going to be important to raise this fee in order to make sure that, that it continues to operate in the Black Garden Board as salaries increase and all the other things take place. So, you know, the, our recommendation is to look at at least twenty-five cents and even consider moving it to five. I haven't paid for childcare recently, but I understand that that's still.
Great, that will be over ten dollars.
And I have to say too, the, not only is that still a great price as someone who has recently paid for childcare, but it's the, there's flexibility in that program that has not, that is not common elsewhere. And that is a benefit that I think parents are aware of. And we don't, and that is not the case in other communities.
In terms of being able to attend just Monday and Tuesday.
Correct, correct. Or be flexible week to week, that's not the case. So, I think that that is absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, truly, our name is. We're not engaged with the discussion because obviously we need to start working on where the early learning center is going to be located if we have the opportunity to add the halftime preschool teacher. And all of these come together at some point in time. But that keeps our options open, and I think it's a viable option as we set the long-term plan for the elementary and higher school buildings. And that's part of the work ahead is really getting that long-term vision now around the existing structures and as our community continues to grow and as perhaps we have a need for more kinds of programs, the programs that years ago, it was, it was just fine to have two preschools. We're seeing a change with that, we need to expand. And so, we just need to set that vision in terms of how our facilities are going to accommodate all that. But the very good news is that we do have TCP. We'll reach out to the town manager, and if, you know, if we pay the rent there, we've been able to use the facility. Our friends from Cropper will be there next year. You know, they'll be back in their, in their school. We'll miss them, and we'll love to have some more children in the building. The Community Link Services Program is still in that program.
Those are very short enough, I know.
They are very short, yeah. But I know there was a lot, there was a lot of sharing and synergies that took place when the two programs were together. And I think it's a nice opportunity to have those, those two programs move back together again.
And I would just like to say, and obviously my, it's a temporary inconvenience to think about how they moved from there and back and the idea that they might have to move back, but I do think that it's important to think about those fourteen three-year-olds.
And they might need to purchase some additional things because if we're going to maintain the other.
Extended day program.
Extended day program down there in the afternoon, that portion, then it's important to have the appropriate materials there. So, and our, our school maintenance folks work really hard to help with all that and have it go as smoothly as possible. There's nothing like an opportunity to call when we organize, so.
We love doing that.
We do love doing that, so. But it is hard work, and I do acknowledge that. I don't want to minimize that it is an extra piece of work for folks. We've provided them the time to do that, you know, and made it happen.
Okay, now we're on to old business, and we are looking at the school calendar again.
We are.
Where we moved a half-day.
Yeah.
Out of town. After the snow day.
I know, I know. And all of you probably talked about this. And, you know, when we start building these calendars in September, October, we kind of have forgotten about what January looks like. And so, and of course, we had career day on the half-day.
It's right.
Well, yeah, and it did. And, you know, once again, my accolades to the DPW and our school staff in terms of all the work that they did and the goodwill of the students and their parents in terms of, of, you know, doing what we needed to do so we could take advantage of all these wonderful volunteers that had come out on career day. So, what we did is say, let's not have any half-days, not schedule any half-days in January and February. I have to share with you that I shared that with my superintendent colleagues, and I was told I was brilliant. I had to walk away back from that because I said it took fifteen years to have that brilliant life go on. So, I don't know. So, anyway, when we, but when I went back with the admin team and others who had worked in putting the, the calendar together, it was like, shall we put it here, shall we put it here? And we really felt that, that Friday before the winter break on December twenty-first was really good.
It is actually, it's the only one that makes sense.
Yes, it absolutely makes perfect sense there.
So, so that's where we put it. You know, we had an early release this year as a result of that, but I know many schools around us just had it scheduled early. And next year, you'll have it scheduled.
Yeah, there we go.
So, I, I think that, you know, in addition to responding to the policy and procedures and being really thoughtful and trying to get as much consistency here and now removing just one more obstacle that could impact a January or February where we have snow days and those weeks, that I can highly recommend this calendar to you. To you, with a hundred and eighty school days in it.
That's a hundred and eighty.
Did you see?
On the bottom.
Now, what?
On the bottom, it says that six-eleven is the one-hundred-and-eightieth day, but it starts at the twelve on here.
Oh, that, I see what did, thank you so much.
I mean, you can feel free to count on it.
Oh, we have to move over?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not, yeah. On the narrative, in the middle narrative.
Which one's the real?
It's the twelfth and nineteenth.
Twelve and nineteen.
When it's right here.
Right, I didn't know.
Oh, my goodness. Once again, a hundred eyes on this. Thank you so much for catching that. That's fabulous. We will make sure that that gets fixed and we'll get it sent out.
Okay, great, that would have been.
Okay, so, thank you.
So, I need to take a motion to approve this new calendar as revised?
As revised, yeah.
I make a motion.
I never sent out the other one because.
Thank you. I make a motion that we accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar as revised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I think that would be great. The budget update is the town manager will be presenting the budget tomorrow at Town Hall. I know we have competitive class plays going on.
Oh, I saw that, sorry.
All sorts of things that provide us opportunities. But that budget will be presented, and I look forward to seeing that and seeing how it plays. I know I was disappointed in seeing what the chapter seventy allocation was under House One. I have already spoken to our state representative, Ms. Benson, and I know she's working real hard on a supplemental budget right now and trying to get circuit breakers beefed up from the sixty-five percent for this current year. And we're hopeful, we know that the House and the Senate frequently do more than the governor has done. Our school increase for chapter seventy, chapter seventy allocation for the town was right at three percent. But I know for the town overall, it was only around one percent by the time all of their revenue allocations took place. So, that's going to be televised tomorrow, that presentation, and that will give us more information to start working on relative to our budget. So, we're starting to see the numbers come in, and that will be helpful for us as we move forward in our decision-making. I would, I, I would not be being upfront about the fact that I, I'm seeing a pathway to a five-point-five percent increase as pretty limited at this point in time. So, I think the work that we have ahead is really prioritizing where our money needs to be going next year and looking for some opportunities, revisiting requests, and just really digging down. And we know all the things we asked, and there was good reason for all of them. But it's, we have to prioritize what we're going to do. So, we're working on that. And I have already talked to the admin team so they can start thinking about getting their pencils out and getting them sharpened and, you know, prioritizing how we're going to do this when we get a final number. That's budget.
It is.
Maybe it is.
Oh, do you have any public comments? From the public? No, from the.
I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that PTO had their meeting this week, and it was part of their discussions, they were talking about the PTO scholarship and that those applications are at the guidance office, it's fifteen hundred dollars. They just have to have that membership for all their years of high school and a simple application resume. So, they're hoping that they get a lot of interest in that.
Can you include that in your class?
I can, can you send me a little?
What's the deadline?
It's April twelfth. The reason it came up is because they're starting to form their subcommittee on who's gonna.
Right, right. Right, that would be great. If you don't, you have that written someplace, so you could.
I just jot it down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I don't know if anybody wanted an update on the athletic advisory?
Well, it's not on here. Well, it's not on here.
I know it's not on there. That's why I asked the public comment.
None of our things are on here.
You were interested.
Okay, but you can do that.
So, we plan to bring recommendations to the school committee on the twenty-first of March around some of fundraising activities and what the, what the plans are going forward. The banners are going to be in the gym over-
Next week.
Next week. There are over forty of them apparently that need to be hung. And that's, those are the highlights.
That's it? That's all that happened in three quarters?
Well, it's the highlight. You were there.
I know.
Yeah, so, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about-
Snack Shack.
Snack Shack as well. And the overlapping of teams and-
Yep, yep.
Everybody that was playing, but I didn't want to take up too much time on that. But the main thing is that in next month, we'll have some recommendations around the fundraising initiatives.
Are you coming to our meeting? Wasn't that one of the things?
Am I coming to what meeting?
Are you presenting at our meeting, this meeting? Is your advisory coming?
Yes.
On the twenty-first?
We have that on the, on the schedule.
Twenty-first of March?
March.
Okay. And you're meeting before that, correct?
We are meeting on March sixth to finalize those recommendations.
Okay. Okay. Is that it for public comment for the committee? Yes?
Yes, for now.
Okay. So, now we're going to go into expected, section MGLT thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Lunenberg Education Association and also conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel, not to come back to public section, correct?